...for the Florisville City Council regular meeting for June the 22nd at 6:00 PM. I'm calling the mayor. I'm calling the meeting to order. Would you please rise for the invocation and not adjutant? Dear Father, we come to you tonight asking for guidance, redirection, and help us, Lord, to make the right decisions for the city of Florisville. We thank you for all those that are here and we pray for everyone's safety. We thank you in Jesus's name, amen.
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and in his business.
We do have a forum this evening in attendance, Councilman David Johns, Councilwoman Andrea Kate Too, myself, Sissy Galatas, Dimple as mayor, Councilman Nick Neeson, and Councilman Gerard Hummels. At this time, it's time for citizens' comments, but at this moment, before we start that, I have a statement from the mayor's office, from himself. I'm addressing issues regarding the meeting this last Tuesday, June the 20th. Since becoming mayor in November of 2016, I have tried to run the meetings as fair as possible. I have never turned anyone away from speaking at their appropriate time allotted. Tuesday night, I oversaw the meeting and did it as normally I do and allowed citizens to speak. Throughout the night, I heard statements belittling myself and members of this council. They still had their opportunity to speak without interruption. I listened to nasty comments directed at me and continued the meeting without interruption. It wasn't until going into executive session that I was told we didn't have anyone signed to security. When we returned to open session, the remarks continued. It is one thing to direct negative remarks to me, but I will not allow any negative remarks or ugly remarks made to citizens trying to give comments. My deepest apologies to Joanne Huhoch. I asked the person in charge of security after the meeting what happened and his response was that he was unaware a meeting was going on that night or happening that night. After an unbelievable night, I told him with a lot of frustration that it is never to happen again. For this, a grievance has been submitted to Mrs. Turner regarding my behavior. I am passionate about a citizen's rights and I will continue to try to be as fair as possible. If I hurt someone's feelings, I apologize, but that was an extremely emotional night. And again, I want every citizen that comes into this council chambers to be comfortable to come up to the podium and speak to us. It's not always nice to us, but I will give you that opportunity. So I wanted to say that before we started. Thank you very much. Citizens' comments? Anyone having something to say, you go up to the podium and I'll go over. You would tell us your name for the record.
Mayor, councilor.
I'm Fred Gonzalez, and I live in Florisville. Tonight, I'm going to talk about something that really upsets me, disrespecting of employees. Because I am courteous, I will talk in general terms. The other night, we talked about violation of Section 3.08 of the Charter. That is, you're conducting or administering business below the city manager. We're not going for her. The last part of that section says, one quote, "Neither the city council nor any member under the position of mayor shall give orders to any subordinate of the city manager either publicly or privately."
Can you move it down a little bit so I can hear you better?
Down this way. While the violation of the Charter is bad enough when it is done in a degrading, intimidating, or threatening manner, it rises to the level of official oppression, processable with the Texas Ethics Commission under Title 8, Chapter 39. When this is done by somebody not within the city government in this manner, it is probably some form of assault and we, the city, should be ashamed for allowing it. Almost nothing makes me angrier than abuse of authority for the miscreant in disrespect of an employee. Take it for your time and attention.
Good evening, mayor, ladies and council. My name is Philip Pfeifman. I'm governor. Currently president or chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the reason I'm up there now is that I have an extremely bad back and I don't think I'll be here for the whole meeting. But I wanted to make sure that you guys understand that the Planning and Zoning Committee is more than willing to step forward and try and give you some badly needed advice on some of your ordinances. The proposed sign ordinance, Dracovian, the building party are suddenly coming to take over? Absolutely ridiculous. I invested a lot of money when I bought the building here in Florisville. And your job is to bring more businesses to Florisville, not run them out. And trust me, with the way you're going on these ordinances, I'm going to lead and a lot of people as well. But I'm more than willing to step up and try and give you guys some guidance on how these ordinances should be. And let's have some business people, business owners, on this board that can give you some advice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Van Der Woon.
My name is Jack Van Der Woon. I own a property at 126 US Highway 181 South. You're about to annex my property to your city. I spoke last week. And when I got home, I thought about it. All the questions that were asked, no answers were given, so I got some questions. What's the cost of a business license here in Florisville City?
Sir, adhering to citizens' comments, nobody can respond. If you wait, who got the hearing coming up, then they come up and we can keep talking.
Then remember these questions. What are the taxes going to be on my small business? That's just mock and pop. It's me. I build all my cabinets myself. How much are you going to charge me in taxes for my building? Are you going to force me to subdivide my property right now? It's really convenient for me because I got my shop on one side of my property and my house on the other. Wilson County, when I moved here, I checked it all out. They said, no problem. How much did they charge me to build my building? Zero. When they told me I had the wife's driveway, I asked them, how much? You know what they said? Zero. Wow, did I taste the freedom when I moved here. We checked all this out before we bought the property. And we really couldn't, we were in awe. We said, we can't let this go. This is freedom. What's my house tax going to go up to? I have to pay, and I knew I had to pay, county tax when I came here. I found out how much it was. I agreed to it. Okay? So I'm not a slave to the county because I agreed to it. How much more is the city of Florisville than the addits my property going to charge me for my house? Plus, I sort of have to pay the Wilson County. Now I'm a slave, not willing, but against my will. I heard there's a sign tax coming in that you want to charge business owners to put a sign on their property. I have a sign on my property. It's on my property. You want to charge me? It's legally placed there. I found out the regulations for Wilson County, where I can place a sign, how far away, everything. I believed in doing everything to the law. Because if you do it according to the law, you never have to look over your shoulder. I'm a businessman. How much is it going to cost me for my sign? Every year. What other now regulations will you put on all of those businesses that you're going to force into your city? Not willingly. Willingly is different. If I willingly wanted to be in Florisville City limits with my business, I would have moved into Florisville City, which I could have. But I saw right away, it's not business friendly. It's anti-business. Are any of you or have any of you ever owned a small business? Think about that. You work for somebody. Have you ever owned one yourself? What I'm asking here is don't pull Pelosi. You know what Pelosi is? I think y'all know her. Nancy Pelosi, Senator, from California, that state I came from, and I had to leave because of all the regulations. Well, she went and said, let's just pass the bill and after it's passed, then we'll see what's in it. This is not right. For the first time in my life, I'm without health insurance because I can't afford it. I couldn't believe it. And the deductible was ridiculous. I am used to insurance, and my deductibles are only $100, no matter what happened. Now it's in the thousands. Are you guys going to do that to us? I had to put a new septic tank in last July. You know how much it cost? $6,000. And it's twice the size I need for my house. Because I believe in going bigger. I believe in building better. Now you're telling me if a septic tank ever starts to fail, I have to hook into your sewer. That's going to cost me more than building a whole new septic tank and field. I did the math already. I'm a businessman, you know? I check things out before I dive into it. So please, if there's a lot of people out here that aren't coming and talking like me, if they want to be sheep, let them be sheep. Bring them in. As for me and my property, please, exit us out of your city. Just square off and leave us in the county. I like Florisville. We like shopping here. It's a peaceful place. That's why we moved here. I don't want to lose my freedoms. Last week, I mentioned the fireworks. I'm going to lose that. I haven't had that since I was me, hide or grasshopper.
Thank you, Mr. Van Der Woon. But your five minutes are up, but we will have our public hearing immediately. Thank you.
Can I respond a couple of things?
Now, when we get to the hearing venue table.
Do I have any other citizens' comments?
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Moy and I live in Curtis City, Texas. My husband and I and my brother-in-law Johnny and Diane Moy, and my husband is Thomas Moy, we recently purchased the former J.B. Drilling Company and it is now Moyes Water Grill Service Incorporated. And the reason we did that, because none knows that we are busy enough with all the wells that we drill, but we have a real concern for water. We've been in business since 1944 and we take a lot of pride in serving the people. Water is what will amount our most valuable resources. And we take a lot of pride in what we do. We wanted to continue to see that this company was going to be run the way Mr. John Ramke had started it. And we wanted to see that we were able to serve your people, Wilson County and the surrounding counties with the water that's so precious to us all. We just recently purchased the company in December and we take nothing, nothing from the city except the, I think we have trash pickup maybe, but that is fixing to change because we're fixing to have our own pickup. But we're not asking anything from you, from the county, from you. We have our own water, obviously. We have our own septic. We need nothing, but we want to let you know that we're here to serve your people. Now, with that being said, I want to let you know that this is not the first time that I've had to deal with different things dealing with city limits. I live in Carron City on a very busy highway, 181, right across from the Stripes. For years, they have tried to do different types of annexation to go on our past. And with the recent ordinance, they were successful in annexing the side of the Stripes. The people were not very receptive about it because they said, what are you going to offer us? What are you going to give us? We're self-sufficient right now. What's going to happen? Well, they kind of, I guess you would say, they kind of came to an agreement and a couple of people had crossed their properties for so many feet and then with the understanding that they would never, ever ask for them to be annexed again so that they could go on out with some of the hotels that they were building. And that was some kind of a deal, I guess you would say, that was made. Now, I know of houses in Carron City that are, one particularly, city right by the high school, has never been annexed into the city limits nor would ever be. And with all the other ones being annexed. I know that there are a lot of different things that you can do to, you can, of course, protest annexation and you can do other things, but the best thing to do is come to consensus with your people and let them know. Nobody is trying to stench a road, but people are trying to make a living. Like I said, we came to your county to help your people. We didn't come to try and get more taxes. I mean, because we pay enough as it is already. But it's a thought that you need to really think about. You know, are we going to maybe buy up a little bit more than we can choose? Are we going to, I think, is it like, maybe, I know you can't answer me, but I think it's something like several, five years maybe or something. You have time to get something done for your people before, there's a time limit, I think. It's three years, okay? And so, I know in Carron City when that was happening, it was like, is the money even available to do what you're wishing to do? Are you financially able to take care of your wishes of annexing these people who are serving your community but are not really willing to annex? And so, now, let me talk to you about that, but I really, I urge you to really think this through and to think, is this the direction we want to go in and what are we doing to facilitate the people that we have? Are we taking care of the people that we have? Are we just going to add some more people onto this list just so that we can help with some of our taxes and things? So I'm going to let me talk to you now.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Wendy Fulmer. I've worked for J.B. Drilling for many years. Now I work for the Moyes. Everything I have to say is pretty much already been said. This evening, I've heard a lot of the things that are going through my head. I like the gentleman at Florisville, Ms. Moy. I, myself, would like to see certain people have choices. I think that's very valuable and it's the people's right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies. Any other citizens' comments at this moment? Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, we have one more.
My name's Ed Walden. I have property on Goliad Road. And it seems like y'all put a hiking bike trail through that property, which is the oldest Southern Pacific and the Union Pacific Railroad. And every time, I want to get new fences fixed. They promised, yes, the parish promised giving up new fences. And I asked Ms. Galfoosa, she said they were going to build fences along this hiking bike trail and they have not. And I asked Ms. Turner, she said, that's not city. Yet the city moors, they maintain that hiking bike trail, they keep the moat up, but as far as the fences, that's county, that's county. I asked Albert Gummies and he says, I don't have the machinery and I don't have the time. And but they have time to collect my taxes, but they don't have time to do that. I lost crazy now since they put that hiking bike trail in there. And Ms. Turner said, well, when it's city, we're going to do it. Well, I don't know. I've been waiting and I've got nothing done. How many people, how many people in here want to go into the city? Raise your hand. How many people don't want to go into the city? See, this is not a democracy when you've got so many people that don't want to be in this. And then y'all don't do anything for the people. That's the main thing. Where the city road ends at my property on Goliad Road, I tore my truck up, hit the chuckle, and the last since '80, y'all have never fixed that road. Then y'all come through, down Goliad Road, my basement, and put a sewer line from the golf course in there and then just put gravel on it and that road is miserable. And y'all better do the rest of the people like this, though. Now, I can see why nobody wants to hear this. Thank you.
I think most of you know me. I'm Fred Waters and I was here on June the 8th at the meeting. I have a piece of paper here that I'd like to pass out to the council member. What I'm here tonight to tell you folks is that y'all have a video of me and probably everybody else on June the 8th at the public meeting. I'm representing myself and my wife regarding the proposed annexation of our property, it's HCD property ID 10321, 12.2 acres. Helen and I purchased this property over 25 years ago, probably closer to 40 years ago, with the thought of no one telling us what we could and could not do with it. Now, with the proposed annexation, Florisville is already telling us what we can do. I, Fred Waters, came to the June 8th public meeting. The city have a video recording of it, which the city can review anytime it wishes. The city is not giving us a very acceptable choice in its development agreement draft that we received in the mail. We either have to accept, I guess we have to accept, a non-annexation agreement or the city will annex the property anyway. That's not much of a choice. Helen and I appear to be getting very little or nothing in the annexation proposal. We do have an annexation on the property now and that's why the letter said we are eligible for the non-annexation agreement. But we now already have oak hills water for our cattle on the 12.2 acre. We have sheriff police protection and we've never used the sheriff or police protection in our 25 to 40 years on this property. We have volunteer fire department coverage. We have the right for our children and their friends to delve hunt on the property during the hunting season. We strongly disapprove of the city telling us what we can do with this property and that's what they're doing in the annexation agreement. I, Fred Waters, have called 83093933105 for the city manager four different days and four different times and all I got was a call saying someone would return my call and no one, to my knowledge, has returned my call. We have a cell phone and we're having trouble determining whether a call came in or not, but to my knowledge, I have not received a call back. All I wanted to know was what is the regular date and time of Florisville council meetings? Because I want to meet with the council because I guess that's the only way I can change anything on this agreement. And what do I have to do to get on the agenda for consideration and action? And regard to the non-annexation agreement, paragraph 1.3 says, "A city shall provide services if you get annexed," and it sounds like we're going to get annexed regardless. But please explain to me and to the audience here, what chapter 43 says must be provided by the city and in what timeframe and if not provided, what penalty or action is the city to endure? That I would like to know. And paragraph 2.3 says, "The owner hereby waives any and all vested rights and claims under Section 43, Double Up 2A2 and Chapter 2.45 of the Texas Local Government Code." Helen and I and our kids that I've talked to will not waive our rights as given by the state. And that's what paragraph 3.3 is, I understand it, is saying we waive our right to any claim under these statutes on the Texas Local Government Code. That's why I need to meet with the council, I'd say with the council. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Waters. I'm sorry, your five minutes are up, but we will be having our public hearing shortly and you'll be able to speak to us again.
Oh, we're not having a public hearing?
Not yet. Still, any citizens' comments?
I'm sorry.
No problem whatsoever. Thank you, Mr. Waters. Any other citizens' comments before we move forward? Okay, moving on to our public hearing for the purpose of considering annexation of approximately 1,600-plus acres of land in four general areas under the 2019 municipal annexation plan generally described as follows. The US 181 corner north, approximately 543 acres from the current city limit at County Road 130 to County Road 131. State Highway 97 east quarter, approximately 328 acres from the current city limits east to the John Deere dealership. A 682.4 acre area along Goliad Road in between incorporated areas of the city and to the south of County Road 101 from the current city limits to the San Antonio River and an area adjacent of the city limits along State Highway 97. And a 43 acre area along the US Highway 181 from the current city limit south to Katy Lane. Non-annexation development agreements are being offered to owners of property within agricultural exemption in accordance with the Texas Local Government Code. And we started opening the hearing at 6:28 this evening. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Chris Stewart with Moody Engineering, and I've been working with y'all on this annexation process since its inception. What I thought I'd do just right away and maybe address some of the questions that have come up a couple of times is just simply read the draft service plan for the council for the record. And then after I've done that, I did pick up on a couple of questions that Mr. Van Der Woon had asked and I did want to be able to respond with some facts on those. And I'll be available generally for questions, but as you know, this is the public hearing for the public to speak. 2019 Draft Municipal Annexation Plan, Service Plan for Annexations for the City of Florisville, Texas. Upon annexation of the area identified above, the City of Florisville will provide city services utilizing methods by which it extends services to any other equivalent area of the city. Number one, police protection. The City of Florisville, Texas and its police department will provide protection to newly annexed areas at the same or similar level of service now being provided to other areas of the city with light topography, land use and population density as those found within newly annexed areas. The police department will have the responsibility to respond to all dispatch calls for service or systems within newly annexed areas. Number two, fire protection and emergency medical Number two, fire protection and emergency medical services. The City of Forestville, Texas and its fire department and the Forestville Volunteer Fire Department will provide fire protection to newly annexed areas at the same or similar level of service now being provided to other areas of the city with like topography, land use and population density as those found within newly annexed areas. Wilson County, Texas contracts for